Penn Trafford School Directors Meeting in order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Lego.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Mrs. Issing.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Matarazzo.
Here.
Mr. Neimic.
Here.
Mr. Petrucci.
Here.
Mr. Stovar.
Here.
And Dr. Trey is out of town. You have a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, now it's time for the appointment of temporary chairperson. I would now like to appoint Mr. Brett Lego as temporary chairperson for the reorganization meeting. And I just want to part, and I want to say excellent group of people, administrators, and I've done this before and I'm an old veteran at this, but I want to tell you something. This group, just like all the other groups I work with, students are first and the community's second, and that's the way it's supposed to be. And a great effort, this building went, finishing up right now, many, many words of praise. And even today at our PTalk meeting, we got some great words of praise about this building. And they threw, he said approximately 300 people came, and that was, it went very, very well. What I want to say is it's been my pleasure to work with you guys, just a real good group, positive, and continue success.
To my young buddy, almost lifetime buddy. Okay.
Okay, the chair at this point will accept nominations for the office of president.
I want to nominate Marty Stovar.
Second.
Yeah, not yet.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Uh, are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Do you have a motion by Mr. Petrucci?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik.
It's our question.
Uh, if there are no objections, I'll conduct the voice vote. All in favor of closing the nominations and electing Mr. Stovar president, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. President. At this time, I turn the meeting back over to you.
Okay, I'll slide on over. Slide on over. Um, I'm gonna start by, the chair will now accept nominations for the office of vice president.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Phil Kachasik for vice president.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? A motion by Mr. Petrucci. Can I have a second?
Second.
Closing nominations for office of vice president. Uh, there are no objections. The chair will conduct the voice vote. All in favor of Phil Kachasik for vice president?
Aye.
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 Stain.
All opposed? Phil Kachasik has been duly elected vice president for 2017 school year. Okay, may I have a motion to establish time, place, uh, date, time, place, date, time, place for regular monthly board and superintendent's information committee meetings for 2017? Establish date, time, place for regular monthly board meetings and superintendent's information committee meetings for 2017. I need a motion?
I move we accept that.
Okay, motion by, uh, Mr. Matarazzo, second. Uh, Mr. or Dr. Koschko to establish date, time, place for the regular monthly board meetings and superintendent's informational committee meetings for 2017. Meetings will be held in room 106, 107 at Penn Trafford High School, Harrison City, PA, beginning at 7:00 PM unless otherwise noted. All meetings are open to the public. Any changes will be posted on the district's website, and I'll leave the dates as listed below. Question is being called for, uh, this will be, or do I, right, question for the, uh, motion on the table.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. I have the motion to authorize the secretary of the board of school directors, Brett Lego, to use the facsimile signature of myself, Martin Stovar, newly elected president of the board of school directors, and to further authorize the secretary to file the required documents with the Department of Education.
Motion.
Motion by Phil, second by Dr. Koschko.
Question.
Uh, question, uh, question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. I have a motion to appoint Mr. Jim Matarazzo as the direct, uh, district's legislative council representative and Mrs. Toni Issing as the alternative representative.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Neimic.
Second.
Second by Dr. Koschko to appoint Mr. Matarazzo as the district's legal, or legislative council representative and Miss Toni Issing as the alter, alternate representative.
Question.
Question by Mr. Kachasik. Uh, question, question is being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Uh, now it's time to adjourn this meeting. So I could have a motion for adjournment. Second. Motion by Mr. Kachasik, second by Mr. Leonard, uh, that the organizational meeting be adjourned at, um, 7:06. Motion, let me call it. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Motion adjourned, or meeting adjourned. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting, uh, for December 5th, 2016. Mr. Lego, can you reread the roll call, please?
Mrs. Issing.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Matarazzo.
Here.
Mr. Neimic.
Here.
Mr. Petrucci. Mr. Stovar.
Here.
Dr. Trey is absent. You have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lego.
You're welcome.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 14th, 2016 meeting.
Motion.
Uh, motion by Mr. Kachasik.
Second.
Second by Mr. Neimic. The two minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, November 14th, 2016 be approved as presented.
Question.
Question being called for by Mr. Neimic. Uh, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Uh, hand it over to Dr. Harris for information.
Thank you, Mr. Stovar. Um, first of all, we have Trent Sims. I know he's not here tonight. I don't think he sent a representative from the student union, and he didn't send me a written report to read, so we will move on, on to our favorite part of the month, which is Students of the Month. Um, this is why we do everything, um, everything we do is actually because of all the students and the good things that the students do. First up, we're gonna actually have our Trafford Middle Student Recognition, and that's gonna be Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Before I, before I do Student of the Month, I wanted to, um, let the board know about a lot of great things that have been going on. We've been really busy as a middle school this holiday season. Um, first of all, over, over the Thanksgiving holiday, we had a Turkey Cup Challenge, um, and we were able to, uh, fundraise, um, almost $1,900, um, for, from all of Trafford schools, including Trafford Elementary School, the Westmoreland County Food Bank. Uh, we're also participating in Toys for Tots. Um, the Delmont Rotary, um, gave us coats, uh, to provide to some young children in our building. And, uh, we also participate in a holiday gift giving to students from donations from staff and a few parents at Trafford Middle School. Uh, on the 23rd of December, we will, uh, sponsor the Senior Citizens Breakfast that morning, the senior citizens in the local area. Uh, December 1st was our chorus concert. It went really well. Uh, coming up was our, was our band concert, which is the 15th of December at 7:00 PM. The High School Encore will visit Trafford Middle School, uh, to, uh, perform for us, our eighth grade chorus. Will also, uh, attend the local nursing homes to sing, uh, holiday songs for them. Uh, the week before, uh, our, our winter break, we will begin our career cruising, uh, with, uh, our eighth graders. And then, uh, and then, a big tradition at Trafford Middle School, December 23rd, is our, uh, winter extravaganza. So it's been a busy, it has been and will be a busy holiday season, but, um, a lot of great things going on at Trafford Middle School. So with that said, I'd like to bring up Maya Roman, Student of the Month at Trafford Middle School. Come on up, Maya. Maya is an eighth grade student at Trafford Middle School. She's the daughter of Suzie and Manuel Roman, and the younger sister of Alexander, who's taking pictures. He's a junior at Penn Trafford High School. While taking all of the possible advanced middle school classes, Maya is a high honor student. In fact, currently, uh, I believe four of her classes are all above 100% right now. Maya is currently serving as the vice president of the school student council, and Mr. Perovich, our sponsor, says that she has taken her position very seriously, showing leadership, and by staying on top of everything, uh, that the, that the organization tries to do, and encourages others to do the same. She represents Trafford Middle School as a positive model for others to follow. Aside from excelling in her academics and being a, a leader in our school, Maya plays soccer, vol- and volleyball on our school teams. And this year, she plans to join the, uh, track team. She has been, uh, the Trafford Middle School Boys Basketball Team's manager in the past, and is on our morning announcement crew. So she's involved in a lot in our school. Maya's been playing soccer since she was four. Uh, she was a swimmer and also involved in Girl Scouts. When not on the fields or the courts, Maya volunteers at her church as a guide for, uh, Vacation Bible School, and is an altar server at St. Regis Church, correct? Maya says juggling homework and after school activities can be a challenge, but enjoys hanging out with her friends and family when she gets some free time. She says that she's thankful, though, that her parents have, have encouraged her to be so involved. Uh, she has met many new people and feels that, that this has helped shape her into the person that she is today. Some of the teachers that, and let me tell you, the teachers, it was an overwhelming favorite that Maya would be, uh, chosen this month. But she's always smiling, as you can see, always, always pleasant, always says hello, and she works hard. She's poised, confident, kind, and a very respected young lady. She's a great kid. She's always willing to lend a helping hand. I've never seen her frustrated or upset. And finally, Maya is a, a very responsible student who's always prepared for school, for classwork, and is willing, is a willing participant in the classroom discussions. Maya, we're very proud of you. Thank you for all you do, and congratulations.
Next up, and actually, Mr. Sullivan's gonna actually leave because he is gonna watch his own daughter perform in the, the Orange Christmas Concert.
She's performing in the, uh, choral, her own choral concert tonight, so.
What grade is she in?
She's in eighth grade as well.
See, if you moved to the district, you know, you would have this issue.
I could just go down the hall, right?
Exactly. Just a saying.
I appreciate it. Thank you, and you have a good hall later, buddy.
Next we have for the elementary, Mr. Dan Denner.
Okay, uh, before I introduce the elementary, I'd like to say congratulations to Maya. She was a student all the way through Level Green. Good job, Maya. I knew, uh, you'd be a good candidate for that. Great family. Okay, I'd like to have Ava Teeman come to the front. Right on that green square. Right there on that green square. All right. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Ava Teeman. Ava is a second grade student at Level Green Elementary School. She is the daughter of Tony Teeman and Amy Campbell, who are here with us, and the younger sister, Tabrock Teeman, who's in fifth grade, she's also here, and Dylan, who's in eighth grade. Dylan opted out for the Penguin Game, apparently. Um, but he's an eighth grader at Trafford Middle School. Ava enjoys spending time and playing with her dogs, Jax and Isibu, uh, riding her bike and going to the family cottage during the summertime. During school, Ava works very hard in all areas. She always has a smile, loves being around her friends and teachers, and says she really looks forward to gym day. Mrs. Damascus, her second grade teacher, along with Ms. Grabzky, who's here with us tonight, say Ava's kindness towards other students sets her apart in many ways. When most second grade students are worried about little things, Ava sees a bigger picture. Within our life skills classroom, one of our students spends the majority of the day in a wheelchair. Ava was extremely concerned that this child might not have anything to do during recess, so she brought things that she bought and made for him so that he would have something to do during recess. She enjoys spending her recess playing with the students within this classroom. This idea was all of hers, and she's even started a club within the school in which students from other classrooms go down and participate during recess within the life skills classroom. She also frequently makes cards and writes notes to let others know how awesome they are. Her teachers state that this selfless thinking about others is something quite extraordinary. I asked Ava what her plans for the future are, and she told me she hasn't gotten that far yet. Ava, enjoy what you're doing right now. Continue to do what you're doing. Keep up the good work. We are all very proud of you. Congratulations on being Level Green Elementary's Student of the Month.
And finally, we have Mr. Cora from the high school. Whoops, double.
One more here.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. That's a two for one night.
Come on up. There you go, Jonathan. I would like to introduce Jonathan Judy from Trafford Elementary as the Student of the Month. Jonathan is a fourth grade student in Ms. Bezuto's class at Trafford Elementary. He is the son of Justin and Stephanie Judy, who are here with us, and the younger brother to Eli, who's a sixth grade student at Trafford Middle. Jonathan, Jonathan's family currently has an exchange student, Laura Bract, who is from Sweden, living, from Sweden, living with them this year, who Jonathan considers a sister as well. Also, last year, the family housed a student from Italy, Matea, that Jonathan considers a brother. He says that they talk all the time. They either use FaceTime, text, what was the other one? Twitter. Snapchat. Snapchat, yes. Uh, it sounds like a nice family, Jonathan. Jonathan's teacher, Mrs. Bezuto, states responsible, kind-hearted, and talented are three words that describe Jonathan. He is an avid antique collector and seller who likes to make connections between his findings and the history of the world. Jonathan's drive to succeed academically is second to none. He maintains straight A's with math class being his very favorite subject. He enjoys playing both the violin and saxophone. He is looking forward to joining an orchestra in the very near future, where he will be one of the youngest people in the group. His participation in band is one of his favorite parts of the school week. Outside of school, Jonathan enjoys reading long books, going with his friends to Ultimate Air, going shopping with his mom, and playing board games with his dad, and making large Lego creations with his brother Eli. While Jonathan maintains fantastic grades, works hard to perfect his musical talent, and excels at buying and selling antiques, he maintains a respectful and polite rapport with his fellow students and teachers. During the summer, Jonathan stays very busy. Along playing with his friends, he attends the Penzic War, which is an American medieval reenactment camp. Jonathan's job during camp is being the paper boy. He makes about five cents per paper he sells. He also enjoys visiting his uncle's farm in Vermont, where they have different animals such as llamas, ducks, chickens, turkeys. His nickname while he is there is undeveloped human. That tells me it's because his taste buds have not developed yet. And then, too bad your brother's not here. He says, on the other hand, his brother's nickname is Mr. Doolittle. Because, well, the name says it all. He sits around a lot. I don't know, he's not here to defend himself. Jonathan, you have a great family around you, as well as, as a bright future, and we also are proud of you as being Trafford Elementary's Student of the Month.
And now, finally, we have Mr. Cora from the high school.
Just a couple, uh, quick highlights of some things going on at the high school, uh, the past month. Wanted, wanted to recognize, uh, both Ms. Hamel and Mr. Cornelius, and all of their students from, uh, the band and choir. Uh, they both have had recent concerts, which have been, are always a great success. But even furthermore, uh, Mrs. Hamel, Ms. Hamel and her choir, uh, for those of you that know, she goes on the community during Veterans Day and sings to the veterans at different community stores and shops. And, um, I was on Facebook one day, and all of a sudden I started seeing these, this, this thread of, of messages going back and forth of the video of kids that I thought looked familiar. Um, and, and as I read through the comments of everyone that was so grateful for these students who were in Target singing these Veterans Day songs, noticed that it was our Penn Trafford students, and end up following them, and they, they had over 300,000 views from that video, and, and all the comments of people just saying thank you to the students and staff, um, for recognizing our veterans. So it's pretty special, and, and 300,000 is quite a bit of views. Um, so congratulations to all of the, the music department, uh, teachers and students. And now onto our Student of the Month, Natasha, if you want to come on up here. So it's never hard to find a student to be represented, uh, for the Student of the Month at the high school. However, it is very difficult to actually narrow that selection down because there's so many good ones. Um, if you've ever been to an athletic event, she has a wonderful singing, uh, singing voice with the National Anthem. Uh, if you've ever been to a musical, a play, or any other community service, uh, activity, she is always present in there. Uh, the high school Student of the Month this, this year, this month is senior Natasha Popovich. Uh, Natasha's the daughter of Sam and Lisa. She has a brother, Nick. Uh, let's not forget her dog, Digby?
Digby.
Digby. Uh, we're talking to Natasha. She explained that the person that drives her to be who she is, is her brother Nick, who's here this evening. Um, she understands that there are some things in life that come difficult to Nick, and he always overcomes those things. Um, and that's what drives her, uh, to, to show that, to be very grateful for what she's giving, and to work extra hard, and to use, use, use her talents and ability, um, the best that she can. Uh, she's a member of the National Honor Society. She's both academically and socially well-rounded. Uh, she is the co-vice president of the Community Action Program here at the high school. She loves doing community service projects and getting her friends to be involved in them as well. Her favorite project is the Jeanette Food Pantry because it makes her appreciate, um, all that she has, and the people, the Salvation Army are always so kind to her and the other students from the high school. This is her fourth and final year in the Drama Guild. She's been part of seven shows here at the high school. This year, our fall play was Great Expectations, and she played the challenging, harsh Mrs. Joe. She says she loves the Drama Guild because it's her family away from home. Everyone is accepting and truly cares about one another. Just like a sports team, we perform amazing shows because everyone works together. She says she has grown as a person through the Drama Guild, through auditioning and not always getting the parts that she may have wanted. Uh, for her, it's not considered a failure, but a chance to grow and take what you've been given and make it something fantastic. She's also part of the encore and slet choir as they are a huge part of her life. Uh, as a child, she remembers sitting on the floor of the multipurpose room in McCullough and wanting to be one of those girls in the glittery golden vests. She's worked extremely hard and has made that a, a dream a reality. She's also been blessed to be part of the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association District Choir this year and, I believe, last year. As an alto, uh, alto one, there are usually about 80 to 90 students who auditioned for, for that one voice part. Only 20 of those students actually get in. Last year, she was the only person to represent PT, and she says it was an absolute honor to represent us. She was just one chair away from regions, and this year, along with best friend Caitlin Powell, they represent PT in the district choir at Matore High School, and her goal is to make it all the way to the, uh, state choir. So good luck on that. We, we know you'll do great with that. In the midst of her busy schedule, she still finds time to, to ski, uh, and is involved with the ski and snowboard for the last three years. Her future plans, uh, include being a major in microbiology or biological studies, and following her career in the medical field. Uh, what inspired her to want to go to the medical field was going with her father to Allegheny General Hospital on Bring Your Child to Work Day. The part she loved the most was observing the surgeries, which, I'm not, I'm not too keen on all the blood, but that's great. And at the moment, she knew she, at that moment, she knew she wanted to, uh, do exactly what they were doing by making people's lives better. As of now, she wants to be a doctor, maybe in pediatrics or a surgeon of some kind. I have no doubt that she'll be working very, extremely hard, and those dreams will come true. Here are a few things her teachers had to say. Natasha's really involved with the community service projects. In class, she's always asking others to get involved and please volunteer their time to do some community service work. She always has a smile on her face, is an all-around sweet girl. Natasha's very passionate about her work in and out of school. She would be the first person to tell you that she does not, that she does not understand what needs a better explanation. However, she's also one of the first people to reach out and help others when they're in that same situation and, and need some help. Natasha, uh, is an outstanding young woman in so many ways. She's musically gifted, she works incredibly hard, she's a natural-born leader, and her academic success is a result of personal commitment and dedication to her education. More importantly, Natasha has a beautiful heart. She is kind, empathetic, humble, and displays a love of maturity that most adults struggle to achieve. Natasha will do wonderful things one day, it will positively impact the lives of the people she meets. However, her greater success, her greatest success would be her shining example of unwavering insistence that our future society continues to embrace the value of humanity, kindness, compassion, and the importance of character. I'm one lucky teacher and parent that I've been able to learn from Natasha's as an example throughout the last several years. She's a remarkable young woman. And with that, once again, we congratulate Natasha on being the high school's student.
At this time, I would like to hear from the press.
You could have sat at the table. We got a whole table. If we could have the Student of the Month, there's four winners. Please come forward for.
It is a motion to.
His cousin lives in my neighborhood and we're good friends. I always heard about them running his grandpa's house. She died right before Christmas one year, right? Two years ago. Yep. Was it Aunt Bee? Okay. I heard the Bod eyes talk about her a number of times, Sally and Fred.
Well, my kids don't even come into town until Christmas.
A couple of other things we wanted to discuss. Before I get to the school calendar, we have other different events going on. I'll just give it a fill on Jim in a couple of seconds, but. All right. Well, I'll just stick to this and move over. The school calendar for next year is on the agenda for tonight, for 2017, 2018. There's truly no real changes. It's pretty much traditional what Penn Trafford does. Our start date is Thursday, August 24th, 2017. Our end date will once again be the last Friday before Memorial Day, May 25th. There's really no changes in there, but I wanted to bring that to your attention because it's on for approval tonight. Program of Studies changes for Penn Trafford High School. I asked Mr. Kula to go over some of the changes and recommendations.
Just highlight some of the things. A lot of things are just name changes and minor revisions. Two classes in the business department with just name changes from personal finance and investment will now be called business and personal finance. They're adding a real estate and business investment opportunities section to that. Our evolution of games will now include more of a hardware and software design component to it. They go all the way from the history of a board game all the way up through designing their own computer-based programs. We're looking to start an internship for credit in the media center. Now we have the new media center. Want to kind of highlight that and make it more educational-based atmosphere. We're capable of using technology and literacy together to peer mentoring, peer tutoring, helping kids with technology and really emphasizing the literacy component of the media center where different books, authors, journals are highlighted in that area. Our music area, as you can see, we've got quite a bit of students who are musically talented. Actually splitting the Encore Novation right now, those two classes are together. Trying to separate those together so they have more time in developing their skills. Our physical education and health, we have, we have a health class in the summertime right now. We are going to offer physical education in the summer for one semester, a max of one semester. Only, kids can only take that for one semester in the summertime. Just get them outdoors and more involved in the community area. Our STEAM classes, we're really trying to find ways to promote STEAM technology and grow those numbers with our Project Lead the Way courses. So we're taking a couple of the courses that are now year-long courses and dividing them up into two separate semester courses. Basically to give kids more options to take more classes. A lot of kids may take a semester of business and that locks them into that area so they cannot take a year-long technology course. So taking a one, a year-long class divided into two sections, that way kids have flexibility in their schedule to pick up some additional classes. And the two classes we're doing that with are the graphics technology as well as the construction areas. We're also taking the architectural design class that we had last year and just dropping that under the Project Lead the Way description and making that a civil engineering course. World language, we are extending right now. We have, for example, Spanish kids. Kids who take Spanish will take a Spanish one, a Spanish two, and then an option of taking an honors level Spanish three or regular Spanish three and continue with their language. We want to boost the achievement and actually create a honors level course at the level two as well. So kids can now go from a Spanish one to an honors level course at Spanish two if they wanted to. We're going to do that for all the world languages, both German and French as well. There's a possibility of offering Russian depending on some survey results. There's a small group of kids that are interested right now. We're doing some surveys school-wide to possibly offer a Russian class every other year. Spacing that out. And that would be for kids who have already taken three years of a language. So if a student is taking Spanish one, two, and three and want to explore another option, it gives them one more option to get.
And it's also because our German teacher is also certified in Russian. So now we're adding another staff member. That's kind of why we have to stagger that.
And then finally, our Q program, which we had pilot in our ninth grade. Really have a core group of classes and teachers that are really focused on 21st century learning. A lot of cross-curricular activities going on. Basically taking the same group of kids that are already taking four honors classes, the social studies, science, math, and English. And basically creating a team of them together so they stick together, have the same four teachers. And giving the teachers common planning time where they can actually plan cross-curricular activities throughout all four classes. Just to gain a little bit deeper understanding of all of, all their subject areas. Example would be, you know, the atomic bomb in Hiroshima. How can we take that major theme? What, what applications in math and science are applied to the dropping of the first atomic bomb? What is the literature component of, you know, biases and propaganda that they can learn from that? And obviously the history piece of it. So taking major themes across the curriculum that they already teach and find spots where they're teaching some of the same themes. And again, emphasizing the 21st century approaches, a lot of hands-on activities, a lot of real journeys, a lot of independent individual work throughout the process. But getting those kids together and actually having those teachers who are actually planning it already. Four, four teachers that teach all these classes together, let them get them timed. The biggest, the biggest, I guess, barrier in doing this is getting common planning time. So providing that time for teachers to sit down and share their curriculums and see what they can cross, cross curriculum and go from there. That's really it as far as the program of studies.
Be introduced to the ninth grade group.
To be introduced to just the ninth grade group. We already have, you know, through, through history, anywhere from 80-some to 100-some students who take four honors classes already. So there really would be no difference in what they're, what they're taking. But offering that so that those kids are getting grouped together in one class. And if it works, hopefully send that into a regular at the ninth grade and possibly 10th grade and just kind of see how we can broaden that.
Usually have a parent meeting in January.
We will have parent information meetings to go out. We'll also talk to students and the middle school principals and talk to kids throughout the school year, through the scheduling process. But we will have that as part of our scheduling parent meetings. So they're very well aware of what's going on.
And thanks for always keeping up with the changes. Every year when you come up with a new course, I keep thinking, well, what's next? And then every year, there's a lot next. I do appreciate it. Next, we have the applicant interviews for region two vacancy. And we actually did send out, we had a lot of people call. Unfortunately, it was calling for region one and they was calling for region, not unfortunate, but they were calling for region one and region three. And during the process, we also realized we have to get our map online. There is, a lot of people were calling and said they just would like to have a place online where they can actually see a map. So we promised we will have a map up as the election season approaches after February. But as of now, we only actually had one applicant for region two and it's actually our former school board director, Bruce Knoll.
Yeah, at this time, unless the board feels it's necessary to do a formal interview, we can accept a motion to appoint Mr. Knoll.
I'll make a motion to approve Bruce Knoll to the region two directorcy being vacated by Dr. PJ Trey.
I have a couple of comments I'd like to clarify to make sure that everybody understands that there were people that contacted the district with interest. And every single person that contacted the district, their name and address is properly vetted through the election bureau and the mapping products that are available to make sure that everyone was considered. And it turned out through that whole vetting process that Mr. Knoll was the only one that was within the region was up for appointment. So everyone was looked at thoroughly. Nobody was taken lightly.
Any other comments? I'd like, questions being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? Motion carried. Congratulations. And Bruce, how many years, how many years did you serve on the board? Ten years?
Ten years in region one. Well, this will be my third region. Started with nine regions. I don't even remember which number I represented then. And then I've been in region three for nine of those 10 years. And then I didn't move, but through the process of elections and setting up precincts, my region was moved.
Actually, did mine went right through your house? Is that correct?
Pretty much.
Right through the street in front of his house.
Yeah, my whole neighborhood went from being in my district to just about eight houses or 10 houses that are now in my district. So at the time of the last election, it seemed kind of fruitless to run against all five incumbent board members. It wasn't to help the board, no matter who won that. So kind of had a year recharge and this opening did come up. I'm looking forward to serving again and the folks at region two will have me through an election. I plan on putting my name on the ballot in the spring as well. We'll see how that goes.
Welcome back. And remember when you left, we, and I wish I would have had it tonight, we read a 10-year summary of the different things you accomplished and the different highlights and it was very impressive.
Well, that's all. So I appreciate it. We look forward to being a part of that again.
I think another point of clarification, it might be in order. The, the fact that his region changed had nothing to do with the school district. It had to do with balancing the population of the commissioner wards. There's five wards. And all boundaries of the regions are based on the ward boundaries that commissioners. So whenever the commissioners rebalanced the population for their wards, it changed the line. It was nothing to do with what the district did.
Yeah, these are examples of what some districts are that large. Do you like the way we do it better? So I may, I may set a record for representing most districts, for most regions as a single board member.
If you want to go for longest years, Ryan, how many more years did he need to beat you, Nick? Another 30?
Oh, 5,000 is four.
Oh, 5,000 is four.
And this will be 40 for you at the end of this term, right, Nick?
It's ahead of me and that chase is good. Oh, my buddy Phil's pushing. Oh, I'm behind you.
Oh, it's good to see you back and we're going to continue on with the meetings. We have a lot more left since there's one meeting per December. The White Christmas sing-along, I wanted to pass off flyers. I should have probably passed them off when we have more people in the audience, but just get the word out there if you want to take it. We do have signs made and I brought one over. This is a community event. It is free and we're trying to promote it. It's for this Friday, December 9th. The concept is to come and it starts off with a community sing-along with classic Christmas songs. And then we're going to show a full-screen version of White Christmas. During the movie, as every single song is played, the children from the choir and the Drama Guild are going to come out and sing the songs with the audience. And the audience are supposed to also sing along. We're going to have the words to all the songs underneath and I'd like to thank Mr. Vinton. I know he's listening because he's taping us right now from another room. But he actually has all the words on there so we can actually sing with the words as they go. During the night, there's refreshments, a lot of cookies and hot cider and hot chocolate. So it's going to be a great night. So hoping this is the very first one. Would like to actually see it continue. We saw many different versions of White Christmas. Once we started to do this, they go, oh wow. And there was different things they can do and eventually we might want to get towards that. But for this year, this is our first attempt and it should be a great night. Mrs. Popovich was here earlier. She just met with the Drama Guild and they finalized the last plan. So it should be a great night. So please come out. Again, it's a free night. We're not asking for any donations. Of course, we always have the food bank available and toys for tots, but that's not required to get in. And you know I'll be walking, driving up and down 130 tomorrow with my signs. The building update, we did have a meeting scheduled for January 23rd. But after careful consideration, we actually want to cancel that meeting on the 23rd. And we will be developing an online survey. Because as you know, we finished a high school renovation project. The project is complete. We just have some punch list items to left and I know Scottson probably talked about that for a little bit in the opening, but we feel that at this time, it's best just to get some input from the community through online survey. And I will be discussing that in January about when we're going to send it out, how it's involved and how you can get it. So that's going to take place then. Finally, December 17th, our scholarship committee is having a vendor show from 9:00 to 2:30 at the high school. And I want to let Tony, because she's also on our committee, discuss that.
Yeah, um, as Matt said, we're having a vendor show, so we're looking for people to come and shop. But you know, if you're a vendor and you have something you want to sell, the tables are $30. And we, the first, so many will get 12-foot tables, then it goes down to eight-foot tables. There'll be food. There will be Santa. We're going to try to see if Santa can come and make it. I think we're talking about having, get a picture with your pet and Santa. But what we use the money for, just briefly, is, you know, there's a lot of individually sponsored scholarships in the foundation. We have one in our daughter's memory. But there's also scholarships that the committee gives out. And we'll give out a scholarship and we have, our principal helped us pick them, for someone who's in vo tech and just trying to go on to enhance their career. Most of the scholarships that are sponsored by individuals like myself are scholarships that go toward a four-year college. We use the money that we raise to go to the non-traditional student. Somebody who may be going to community college. Maybe is just going for a career training like welding or machinist. It could be used for a special ed student who wants to go on and get some special training. So this is kind of our outside-the-box scholarships, outside the traditional student scholarships. But they're all very worthy causes. Do you want to add anything? Because you get to pick some of them.
Yeah, no, we definitely need the funds to keep it going. It's nice to sit down and take a look at out of the box, kids that don't always get scholarships or qualify for the four-year schools. One, one other way to give back to the kids in the community. We're looking again for both vendors and shoppers.
And donations. If you would like to make a donation to our cause, we, we don't turn down any donations.
How many scholarships do we give away over here, Tony?
Did you, Tony, you switch?
Either Tony, take your pick.
It's over 60. I think, I thought we gave over $60,000 away last year.
About $60,000 worth.
Yeah, it's around six. We, the last time we tabulated, we gave out more scholarships than the rest of the school districts in Westmoreland County combined.
True.
We are a very active group of people and we have a lot, lot to offer. We really, really in it for the kids and we want them to be successful.
The community, Penn Trafford, I have to say, is always very proud of the students and accomplishments. Almost everything we ask the kids to do or need from the kids, it's, it's very well received.
Right?
All right. I know I talked a lot, but that's all I have to say for tonight and I apologize. We just had a lot on the plate.
That's good. I didn't have anybody sign up for recognition visitors today. So I'm going to, may I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report and the high school extracurricular fund report? Motion by Mr. Kachasik.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nemec, that the treasurer's report of the month of November and the high school extracurricular fund report of the month of October be approved as presented and made a part of the official minutes. Questions being called for. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried. I have a motion to approve the payment of bills for the month of December.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Nemec.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi, to approve the payment, who was it?
Jim.
Mr. Matarazzo. Sorry, Mr. Matarazzo, to approve the payment of bills for the month of December 2016.
Question.
Question is being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried. There is no old business tonight. I'll let Christina comment on executive session.
Thank you. The board met for an executive session today at 5:15 to discuss matters of personnel, real estate, and they've also received information on curriculum development as well as the school district calendar during that meeting.
Thank you. Also, move on to new business, and I'll go into athletics and extracurricular and Mr. or Dr. Costo.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have a few items tonight. Move to accept the following resignations. Crystal Wodner, Spring Musical Props Coordinator, effective immediately. Kelly Keebler, Junior High Girls Head Volleyball Coach, effective immediately. Alex Miller, newspaper sponsor, Penn Middle, effective December 6th of 2016.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard. Question called for by Dr. Costo. Question is being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
Move to employ the following personnel, effective immediately. New employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation and acceptance of Act 34-151 and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Thomas Price, ninth grade assistant baseball coach, had a salary of $2,887.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nemec.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
And one last item, move to approve the following volunteer coaches, effective immediately. All coaching volunteers must have Act 34-151 and 114 waivers on file. Athletic director, Nick Caparoso, volunteer wrestling coach. Larry Vici, am I saying it right?
Not sure.
Becky, Becky, Becky? Volunteer assistant, RC assistant baseball coach, excuse me.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
And that'll be all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Costo. Budget and finance, Mr. Kachasik.
I do have an item to see them, Mr. President. Thank you. Move to approve the expenditures for the high school renovation project for the month of November 2016 according to the schedule as listed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ising.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
I do have a question for Mr. Engleish real quick. Do we have a final total for the contingency for the building project?
Well, yeah, I mean, I've been telling you last couple of months, it's sitting around $50,000, and it's probably still sitting at that, at that level. But, you know, all the bills have not come in for the project. We still have approximately $600,000 outstanding in the project for, for the contractors. We're not issuing payment to the contractors until the entire punch list is done. So we'll see how that unfolds before we settle with everybody.
Thank you, sir. As though I have the seat, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kachasik. Building, buildings, grounds, and safety, Mr. Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have one motion. I'd like to move to accept the following retirement resignation. Tammy Lee, Custodian at Level Green Elementary, effective January 16th, 2017.
Second.
Second by Dr. Costo.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
Just wanted to jump in for a quick second. I want to thank Tammy. She had 35 years with the Penn Trafford School District, and she did an excellent job and whipped her praise, and Dan's right here. Nice viewing of Tammy.
Yeah, she did a very nice job. I was going to make her the custodian of the month. But we didn't have time. But Tammy made her decision about a month and a half ago, and she's going to be highly missed at Level Green amongst the staff and the kids, especially the kids. So.
She had the daylight shift, so when you do the daylight shift, all the kids in the building know you. So it's a little bit different than the, different shifts. And it was a highly competitive bid, and I thought for sure a lot, to someone who was number five on the list, I believe, bid on it. So it's a good school. But she will be missed, and I'm sure she's going to enjoy her retirement.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Harrison.
Sorry.
No problem. Employee relations, negotiations, and transportation, Mrs. Ising.
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Food service, Mr. Nemec.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Personnel and curriculum, Mr. Petrusi.
May I, Mr. President? Would they prove the additional substitute teachers support position for a month in December 2016?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik. Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
Would they prove the Penn Shore High School program study for 2017-18 as presented to the board?
Second.
Second by Mr. Matarazzo.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
Would they prove the following lead request? Family Albert, Donald Serman, Andrea Biscura, David Nijack, Lord Overly, Colin Stevens.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
Would they adopt 2017-18 school calendar as recommended by the superintendent and make it part of official minutes? 2017-18 school year begin with this service on Monday, August 21st, 2017, or officially terminate June 30th, 2018. Last day of instructions for grades K-11 will be Friday, May 25th, 2018, unless it becomes necessary to extend the school year because of weather conditions, emergencies, or other urgent reasons.
Second by Mr. Kachasik.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
Would they adopt 2017-18 service employees calendar and make it a part of official minutes? The calendar with 246 working days and 14 paid holidays makes it work here 260 days. Yearly employees will be paid for 260 days, including the paid holidays.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nemec.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
Would this year professional contract to the following teacher in accordance with Section 1108, School Laws of Pennsylvania. This teacher has satisfactory three years of teaching in the Penn Shepherd School District, Maria Franz.
Second.
Second by Mr. Matarazzo.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
Maria, I'm sorry, Mr. I'm sorry, I believe that she's done three years already because it seems like just yesterday she was hired, but it was actually Maria De Senza was her maiden name. She works, she works at Penn Middle, and as a sixth-grade teacher and does a great job. So it's nice to, but again, it's hard to believe three years has passed and here she is, but it happens. Sorry.
Would they accept the following resignations? Stephanie Bonja, John Gutwold, Alex Miller, as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
Would they put the following personnel new employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation and acceptance of Act 34-151, 114 waivers, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Lori Baicich, I'll try to true that up. Stephanie Bonja, Marina Ferrari, Tiffany Ott, Caitlin Reinhardt, Patricia Sitsko, Ashley Temple, Kim Zombak, and the rest is as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nemec.
Question.
Question is being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
Would they prove the following student teacher's service from the same bits of college as listed?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard. Question being called for. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi.
Mr. President, just one minute. I think there is a typo. In number seven, you have Stephanie, and number eight, Stephanie. I believe it's the same person, but the names go wrong.
One's PH and one's F.
Yeah, it should be PH for both.
Correct that. Policy Public Relations Legislative Title II, Mr. Matarazzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and file the minutes of the Superintendent's Information Committee meeting held on Monday, November 7th, 2016.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nemec.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say no. Motion carried.
I'd also like to move to appoint the following Recreation Board Representatives. The Penn Township Rep. Mr. Phil Kachasik and Dr. Scott Koschko. The Trafford Borough Rep. Mr. Nick Petrusi.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ising. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
I'd also like to move to appoint the following as PTAR representatives. Mr. Nick Petrusi, Dr. Matthew Harris, Mr. Greg Cappuccino, Cappuccioni, I'm sorry, and Mr. Mike Ginsburg as the alternate.
Second.
Second by Dr. Costo.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No.
You know what? We actually left off Stan.
Stan's laundry, correct.
So we need to make a motion again. We need to add or just make a new motion. I'm sorry.
Ask the individuals that, who raised the motion and seconded, if you could add that name, if they would approve that.
Who was it?
Dr. Mattiazo and Dr. Koschko.
Did you revise the motion to include? Stanley Rush.
Rush.
Revised motion to include Stanley Rush.
Is he an alternate?
He's the fourth. Mike is the alternate.
Is that okay? Scott, is you seconding him?
Absolutely, second.
So Stanley Rush, Rudge?
Rudge.
Will be added as a representative?
He's the representative. He's our fourth representative. Mike's the alternate.
We have to vote again, or we just amended it?
You just call a question again.
We're calling, questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
That's all I have for tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matarazzo. Taxes, insurance, and census, Mr. Nemec.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to approve the Tax Resolution Act I, Taxpayer Relief Act, limiting the tax increase for the 2017-18 fiscal year to 3.3%. A copy of this resolution will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting. Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
I do have a question.
I do too.
Brett, what's that translate into mileage wise?
That equates to 2.6 mils. And again, we are not indicating that we are raising mileage by 2.6. Only that, that is the maximum we could do.
Thank you, sir.
No, last year's maximum was 2.4. Is that correct?
Correct.
Good. All right. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
That is all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Nemec. Solicitor, any special reports for us?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I've circulated a summary of the matters that we've handled on behalf of the school district to all school board vendors, and that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Christina. PTA Representative Sean, I think you had tonight?
Another guy.
All right, thanks, Sean. Make a motion to for adjournment.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Kachasik, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Matarazzo. Being will adjourn at 8:05 tonight.